You guys really need to appreciate them. Thank you all, too.
Ron, I very much appreciate all your mentorship and your good humor and just your general love of life and personality, and you'll be very much missed.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not crying, I got a runny nose. All right, Ron, I won't break out for pictures, I'll scare you. Before you do, he's gonna show you people a picture of me, since I speak Apache Indian very well. We went to the, talked to the Apaches about the casino, and we met with them, and we were supposed to meet them at 8:00, and they finally saw us about 1:00, and I had kinda dozed off just a little bit in the chair, and my hat fell off, and I was drooling here, and he took that picture.
True story, man, true story.
And he's blackmailing me with that picture ever since. Thank you.
I was a partner with Ronnie for most of those 10 years, and he knows, he knows it. I appreciate everything he's done, so anyway.
He and I have been running around together since we were 8 years old.
It's a long time.
Yeah. Was that a slam, or was that a? I don't know, I'm gonna let you take it as it is. Thank you, guys all, I appreciate it. Alrighty. Alright, let's try and do some business here. Item 6A, deliberate an act on approval of the November 28th. Oh, someone else wants to speak? Sorry, I didn't see your hand earlier.
No, no, that's quite alright, that's quite alright. So, good evening and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
So, I'm sorry that I haven't been here before now. My name is Michael Brown, and my wife, Brandy Dietz, and I own the Raton Pass Motor Inn. We bought it back in November of 2020, and we love Raton, and we are excited about the future of this wonderful town, and we will continue to be a part of it for many years to come. And let me echo what has been said here. Thank you, and thank you to each of you for what you do, because your hard work and your service is very much appreciated by many of the residents here, and I for one am deeply appreciative of the work that you do. I can't stay long, because I have a motel to run, but I want to talk to you about animal control. Shortly after I moved here in 2020, I was out for a bike ride when I was attacked and bitten by a dog not too far from the home. The owners offered no assistance, instead they rushed the dog inside and told me I probably shouldn't ride my bike in Raton. I did go to the hospital, and I got a few stitches, and I contacted the authorities to file an incident report. But as far as I know, the owner was simply given a warning about an animal that had literally attacked a person in the middle of the street. This past summer, I witnessed the death of a dog who was struck by a car on Francis Avenue. This sweet little dog, named Cookie, had an owner, but she let Cookie roam the neighborhood at will. I came upon her moments after she had been hit by a car, lying in the street, literally dying in front of me. I had the grim task of picking Cookie up and taking her to the owner and delivering the news that she had been hit by a car, and the owner was understandably devastated. As someone who has animals, loves animals, this event made me both sad and angry at her, because she wasn't taking care of her dog. Over the past few months, we have been dealing with a pair of neighbor's dogs being allowed to roam the neighborhood at will. We've observed them in the streets, on our property, on other neighbors' property, and on the railroad property across the street. We've notified Animal Control on multiple occasions, reporting that they roam, they behave aggressively towards myself and my wife, our motel guests, our motel staff, neighbors, and pedestrians, just residents out enjoying the walk. Just this past week, they chased my wife as she went for a morning jog, even though she was on the opposite side of the street, and they regularly come out to nip at our housekeeper's heels as they are taking out the trash, or housekeeping staff taking out the motel trash. We have provided photographic evidence to Animal Control of the dogs roaming loose in the streets, including photos taken after Animal Control spoke with the owners, and when they were warned about not allowing the dogs to roam the streets. Now, these particular dogs are not large, they're not a dangerous breed, but they're still aggressive towards some people, and they are a great nuisance. They defecate on our property, they harass us and our staff and our guests. Furthermore, one of these dogs is quite obviously not spayed. She has clearly given birth within the past couple of months or month. To the best of my knowledge, these owners have been talked to but not cited, despite the repeated violation of city ordinances, violations supported by photographic evidence. As of yesterday and today, the owners appear to be keeping them contained for now. But this isn't just about our incidents, this is about animal control overall. I am asking that Animal Control be empowered to have the authority, the confidence, and the willingness to cite people who routinely and repeatedly flout these animal ordinances. Dogs of any size being allowed to roam the city's streets is dangerous for the dogs, for residents, and for visitors. Our little vintage motel literally hosts thousands of guests every year, and we collect thousands and thousands in taxes from these mostly out-of-state guests. I do not like to have to warn our guests to watch out for neighborhood dogs when they ask us if they can walk to historic downtown for dinner. I don't like the experience that that conveys, and neither do any of you. It makes our town look unattractive. Animal Control has a tough job, and I appreciate the time and effort they put forth. I ask you to please do what is necessary to make sure they have, make sure they can and will enforce the relevant ordinances, especially by citing repeat offenders. As the saying goes, money talks, and some people don't listen until they get bitten in the bank account. Thank you for your time and consideration, and Merry Christmas.
And we will task our city manager to look into this.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else wish to address us at this time? All right, now we'll move in. 6A, deliberate an act on approval, November 28, 2023, regular meeting minutes. We, Commissioner Chadley, found a minor typo in there, so...
Minor typo in my report towards the end, instead of approved, it says disapproved, so just that, small correction. With that, I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion, a second, to approve the minutes as corrected. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate an act on the 2024 holiday schedule, Mr. Mestes.
I didn't get a copy. No, that's fine. In front of you is the 2024 holiday schedule. It is following the same pattern that we have done in previous years. There's really not much to say. They come when they come.
Are we obligated to follow Juneteenth these days, or is that just a recommendation?
I think we're obligated.
That is up to the commission.
Okay. I think it has to do with, like, the union contract, I wanna say I was told.
Yeah, it just now exists now, and I don't know.
Federal holiday.
Yeah, it is federal.
I know we're, we started acknowledging it in Santa Fe.
Yeah. Did we want it?
Mr. Mayor, I do not believe it's an address in any of our four existing collective bargaining agreements, of which none have expired since the creation of that holiday.
Okay.
Okay.
It would essentially require a swap out, probably.
Right.
Well, why don't we approve this as, I would recommend we approve this as is, and then do a little investigating.
Okay.
On what we need to do.
Whether we need to add it. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
A motion, a second, to approve as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, deliberate an act on personnel board application, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, Personnel Board meets approximately once a year to handle any issues that may come up. This year, we only had one person, Terry Baca, request to stay on the board, and so, as incumbent, I would recommend that they be given a three-year term. The other two recommendations for the board, Kathleen Hansen, owner and operator of a local business and currently active with the Humane Society, Alternatives to Violence, and CYFD CASA, I recommend for a two-year term, and Jennifer Porteos, manager at INbank and currently serving on the Raton Main Street Board, served for one year. In the past, everybody's term expired at the same date. I'm recommending that we stagger these, and this is my recommendation to the commission.
We're ready?
Okay.
Any comments?
Sorry, did we receive any applications?
These were the only applications we received.
Oh, I just didn't get them, that's why I was asking.
I'm sorry, they're on my desk.
Okay, yeah, 'cause normally I would give them to the commission as well.
Okay, that's my fault.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion, a second, to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate an act on juvenile justice, FY 2024-2027 grant application, Mr. Mestes.
Yes, this grant has been since 2009. I'd like to call Michael Ann forward to discuss the specifics.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. As Mr. Mestes stated, we have had this grant since 2009, so we're all pretty familiar with it. The current grant that we have was a four-year grant that will expire as of June 30, 2024. The new grant cycle is due upon us. We have submitted a draft agreement and attended, like, a pre-application meeting with CYFD, so they did give some feedback, and we've made corrections. So we do bring to you the final version of the grant, which is due this week. This particular grant would be for three years, FY 25, 26, and 27. You will see on page 3 what we are requesting, and this is based on the current data with the three programs that we offer, which is the Girls Circle, the Boys Council, and also the Restorative Justice. We do have two new subcontractors this year. The programs are actually in a really good place. We've had some years in the past where we've had some issues with inexperienced subcontractors, and I think Youth Heartline has hired some really good facilitators this year. And then Restorative Justice would be, Angie Ortega has a company called New Hope that provides those services. So I think we're seeing some really good success with the programs this year. The budget for what we were awarded for this fiscal year is $219,696. That is the highest amount that we've received since we've been the fiscal agent for this grant, so our ask is a little bit higher, but like I said, we do have the data to support the number of students served in each of the programs. As with most grant applications, funding is limited, so this particular fund, we have been told, has quite a bit of funding because of reverted funds in the past, so there is money available through the juvenile continuum grant funds. So we are, like I said, we're gonna ask a little high and see where we come in. More than likely, it'll probably come in similar to what we've received in the past. The other thing I wanted to mention is we still, as the fiscal agent, are eligible to receive an admin fee, it's called program support. So 15% of the grant funds do go towards the program support, which we utilize a percentage of my time. This is also a federal grant, so there's a federal component for the audit that we administer every year, but we also employ part-time continuum coordinators, so we have processing of payroll, processing of monthly invoices to the subcontractors. So a percentage of those funds are used to support the efforts of my staff, and then there may be other expenses throughout the year that we could use the money to support the programs themselves, potentially for ongoing training and things that might be needed.
Michael Ann, I understand that this also funds approximately seven positions?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, I've always been a big proponent of the grant for the fact that, of a lot of the grants that we do administer, this is one of the few that actually creates some jobs in our communities. So between the two subcontractors, generally about six positions, maybe not full-time positions, but six positions are created at a minimum for the Girls Council and the Boys Council, and then another, probably one to two positions for Restorative Justice, and then our part-time position for the continuum coordinator. So when you think of it in terms of that, you know, creating jobs in our community, it really is a good grant and a good program.
It's a good program. No, we were a little nervous about it at first, but it's turned out to be a really good program, I think.
I mean, the program has had its ups and downs, as we all know, but, you know, when we do attend some of the state meetings, they look at Raton as really one of the model programs in the state. A lot of the programs over the years haven't survived, which means there's even more funding available, because there's fewer programs statewide than there was probably even five years ago.
Yeah.
I will move to approve the juvenile justice FY 2024 to 2027 grant application.
A motion, a second, to approve. Is there any further discussion?
I had a couple of questions. Is there a reason, because I think this is a great program, I'm just curious why the city has this, since it's so school-oriented, and why the schools are not the fiscal agent for this type of program?
So we did ask that question of CYFD a while back, and we were told that the schools are not eligible to be a fiscal agent, it would need to be a city or a county.
Okay, so it can only be...
Yeah, so we did ask that question.
Yeah.
I guess some of my questions, too, Michael Ann, is, you know, it mentions Union County, and along with us, has Union County, Clayton, been approached to be the fiscal agent ever, or?
Not, not that I am aware of. I do know that in years past, some services have been offered to Union County. Also, we've included in the application, there would be the Maxwell, Summeron, and Springer as well.
As you know, in the past, we've, seems like every other year, we're having to find a new provider.
Yeah, no, it's been a struggle.
It's been a struggle, and I really struggled continuing as the fiscal agent for this program. It's a good program, but it seems like next year, about this time, we'll probably be looking at another provider, if history holds its course.
Like I said, I mean, we are in a good place this year. Youth Heartline actually provides the services in Taos, so they're already, we got really lucky this year that Youth Heartline was able to submit a proposal, and they were selected. And then the Restorative Justice piece, Angie Ortega has worked in the community for many years. I think she initially started with SOI back when we got the grant in 2009, so I think she's an excellent provider for Restorative Justice. So if, if we're lucky enough to, you know, get the grant funding again, then we would solicit proposals again in May, and then hopefully our current providers would submit proposals again, but certainly there could be other providers come forth that have interest as well.
If the, if we apply as the administrator and the grant is approved, is it possible, you know, looking at all the different school districts that are served, is it possible to transfer fiscal agency to another entity? I know we're kind of down to the wire if it needs to be submitted this week, or is it something that we're committed to through 2027?
You know, that I don't know, to be quite honest. I mean, I think we do go through a process, even though it's a award of a three-year grant, they do have to issue grant amendments annually that I have to bring back to you for approval. So it kind of is still awarded for three years, but it's still approved annually.
It just looks like it serves the counties, I mean, it just seems odd to me that the city of Raton is administering something in so many different...
Well, since I've been with the program since 2009, you know, the history of this grant, in 2009, Warren Walton was very instrumental in the initial application and award of this money, including our mayor at the time, who was Joe Apache, very supportive, and that was the reason why Raton, Colfax County, was awarded the funds, but the county was supposed to be the fiscal agent then, and then for whatever reason, they had turned it down, and so we've kind of had it since then.
Okay. Thank you for that, Agent.
Yeah, I guess some of my other questioning would be, too, if we could get reports, you know, we can read this now, but it's really not telling me, okay, what is this program? What are they doing, you know?
So, one of the requirements is, we do have to provide an annual report, so I do have a fairly detailed annual report that we could certainly share with you.
Okay.
If that's something you would want to look at.
And could we get the providers possibly to show up and give us a report?
Sure, we could definitely arrange that.
That would be nice. Because here, you know, this comes with bars and everything, and there's a lot of work that goes into this, and I appreciate you taking your time and doing that. There's a lot of work into this grant, and it seems like not to, seems like a lot of people are taking us for granted for doing it for so long, you know?
Sure, no, definitely.
This one's one that I've struggled with for a couple of years.
Yeah, and like I said, it's, it's difficult, because we do have to solicit proposals, and we've had less and less providers in the community over the years. A lot of the agencies have closed and left Raton, but, you know, Youth Heartline, like I said, they do provide the services in Taos, and they've had a presence in Raton for several years, so I think the programs are actually in a really good place this year. But yeah, we would definitely arrange for them to give a presentation, we could even possibly have some of the youth attend.
That would be great.
We have a youth board.
Yeah, that's what I was reading, and I've heard anything about that, so that would be great.
Okay, we could definitely do that.
All right, any other discussion?
Thank you, Michael Ann.
Sure.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item E, deliberate an act on agreement between the city of Raton and New Mexico... Item E, deliberate and act on agreement between the City of Raton and New Mexico State Library for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four state grant in aid. Mr. Mestes.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, this is, the source of this funding is the state of New Mexico Legislature. All state grants in aid funds must be spent by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and for ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents, these, this aid may be used for library collections, library salaries, library staff professional development, library equipment, or other operational expenditures associated with the delivery of library services.
All righty, and everything must be spent by the end of June?
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions, comments for Mr. Mestes?
Motion to approve the state agreement between the City of Raton and New Mexico State Library for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four state grant in aid.
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the City of Raton and the Mexico State Library. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on out-of-state travel for ports to planes. Board member Lori Chatterley, March third through eighth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Mestes or Commissioner Chatterley?
Any questions?
This is for Commissioner Chatterley's trip to Washington, D.C., to cover flight, five days in the district, and then additional travel days. It's looking at about a three thousand dollar estimate for tickets, hotels, food, rental car, et cetera. And D.C.'s not North Dakota, you know, D.C.'s an expensive place to be. But everything here very much looks in line, having lived in D.C. for fifteen years. This is certainly in line, and it covers her visits to the House, to the Senate, and to hearings and with meetings with administrative departments.
They argued earlier this year, so I was able to look at airfare that's a lot less the last year, which is my around five hundred dollars for a flight out, which is great.
Well, I'd like to commend Lady Chatterley on the good job she's had since she's been appointed to the ports-to-plane.
Absolutely.
It's really been a, she's been doing pretty good.
Thank you.
And for those of you out there with the ports-to-plane, this is having to deal now with the Interstate twenty-seven designation, so this is pretty important.
Important we have our say in how things come into town and...
How they go.
What that looks like as it rolls out. So we, last year, we went out and talked to people, our legislators, about the actual designation of I-27. They had just designated the corridor, but they hadn't actually designated our road as I-27. So that's actually not all the way passed yet. It's made it pass the House, and they think the Senate is going to pass that really soon. So that's out there, and we also are looking at funding. Last year, we focused on trying to get money for Clayton, which still hasn't passed all the way through, to have some of their intensive planning done, since it will affect their downtown drastically, what that's going to look like. And hopefully this year, I'm working with Lauren Gardunio, some of you may have met him at the Economic Development Summit, about hopefully asking for some money specific to Raton funding and getting, New Mexico DOT has committed, if Clayton gets that funding, to put in some money, so talking to DOT again about that. And Ports-to-Plains is actually talking to New Mexico DOT on our behalf, so we have some good relationships I'm building there.
I just have one question. Is this the only long-distance travel for you this year?
So there's this one, and then in September, mid-September, there's a trip to North Dakota that I, probably will be a road trip, to be honest. I don't, by the time you drive to the airport and fly, and then, yeah. So that one's later on in the year. I don't know if we need to, it probably will not be nearly as costly as this, since it doesn't cost one of our airfare. But that would be the other, there may potentially be some trips in Texas for board meetings. They have not announced that yet.
I think NLC is scheduled to start the tenth, so we might be crossing in the air.
In the air.
Motion to approve. On a six-seven, we're a force to bring, board member, just eight, eight, six-seven, March third, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the travel expense. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will abstain.
Yeah. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zip with one abstention.
Yes, sir.
Item G, deliberate and act on agreement between the City of Raton and the Mexico Department of Finance Administration for the HB two, twenty twenty-three Regional Recreation Centers Quality of Life Grant Award. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, at this time, I'd like to call forward our Director of Public Works, Jason.
Mayor and Commissioner, in front of you have a lengthy grant agreement for the much-anticipated Quality of Life Grant. I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-three pages. The essence of that agreement is we've been awarded three hundred and ninety-nine thousand with a pledge of one hundred thousand in matching funds towards the Ballfield project. Ms. Ann Theis, I believe this application, I did help with budgeting and scope of work. I would have one thought on it. It is federal flow-through coronavirus funds that are due to be expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, which, until the grant agreement came, I had no idea that would be the case. I've reached out to DFA to try to get a gauge on what level of federal criteria we're falling under, if it's CDBG level to be completed in seven months, or if some of those requirements are waived. But it's going to make this project more expensive than anticipated, and it's going to be a very tough deadline. We will do our best to pull the rabbit out of the hat, possibly needing some outside services to help do so. I would still recommend going forward with it. It does ultimately free up significant monies in the general fund. We had budgeted five hundred thousand towards these improvements, so, I mean, hopefully the hundred thousand is enough to cover, and we don't need more than that for our match. We can prioritize certain parts of the project, but there is a wrinkle or two added, but I would still recommend approval of the grant agreement. Three hundred and ninety-nine thousand is a lot of money. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
How do you feel about the timelines of completion?
Probably been, never been as nervous about being able to successfully complete a grant on time in the ten years that I've been here. It's, it's a tough ask.
I didn't realize either until I saw the sixty-three pages that it's federal money.
It's, it seems unrealistic, and if I wasn't cynical, I would assume that there may be an amendment to that, when someone comes to their senses, especially considering three of those next six months are unbuildable in most of northern New Mexico for exterior projects, which Quality of Life is kind of synonymous with outdoor rec facilities, and we've got thirteen inches of snow forecast in the next seventy-two hours, so. But reality doesn't always work. I fear that there may be a federal string attached to the coronavirus funds that kind of created this. It was my interpretation that last year's Quality of Life grants were more of a state feed-through with the legislature than this coronavirus act. So it may be a hard deadline, and only the winters prevail, and we'll, we'll try to do that, but I will warn you in front, I'm nervous about that. I mean, I think the bathrooms are the most critical part of the project. They're also the most difficult to get Davis Bacon wages in a federal packet put together for and built in six months, but we'll die on the hill trying. That's the best we can do.
Not to put pressure on, but we got faith in you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
You know, I found the June thirtieth deadline to be interesting, because other monies that I'm dealing with, coronavirus money, art money, and that, I have until September thirtieth. At least you got a couple more months. I would be hard-pressed to think that this couldn't be extended to at least that.
I will ask and beg those questions of DFA in the days to come, but even thirty-day extension would be very helpful.
Yeah, if you could get to September thirtieth, like the other Corona money and that, that would be...
It buys us at least some construction window in warmer weather.
Right. But we know you can do it, Jason.
Thank you for the faith, and we'll try hard.
Mr. Mestes, any comments?
I believe, depending on where the source of this funding is coming within the federal government, there are some federal agencies that like to sweep all their money in the last quarter. So I don't, I'm not overly optimistic, but I would certainly have to do a lot more research on this to see, you know, if this is really, if, if this is really that hard of a date. However, the money's there, I say we take it.
Oh, yeah.
And I would say that if the amount of money is significant enough where, if we had to enlist some third-party services, if we had to have an accelerated construction schedule that resulted in higher pricing, I mean, the net gain is, is still clearly a win. It's, it's not impossible, but I hate to overpromise and under-deliver. It's, it's going to be tough.
I hear you.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to adopt the agreement between the City of Raton and the Mexico Department of Finance Administration for HB two, twenty twenty-three Regional Recreation Centers Quality of Life Grant Award.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to adopt the agreement. Is there any further discussion? Yes, can we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Jason. Item H, deliberate and act on engineering analytics fee proposal for design and construction phase services for pickleball courts. Mr. Mestes.
Okay, this is to provide design and construction phase services for the proposed pickleball courts at the Aquatic Center located in Roundhouse Park. The amount that we're looking at is a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred, and this is really just for the design and to get us through the construction phase. There's a lot of investigating, there's a lot of, you know, testing the areas, putting together the bid packages, and construction management. My problem with this, not only with the cost, but is, you know, I really would like to do further homework on this to see if there are any alternatives. We can't start construction on this now in the dead of winter, but what I would like to do is see if there are alternatives for possibly using this at an indoor location throughout the city. For example, if we were to buy mats, mats cost between fifteen and twenty thousand that already have the courts laid out on them and can be rolled up and moved. So I, I recommend that we postpone, do just a little bit more homework. Jason, there's not an expiration date on this, right? I could not find one.
There is not. The engineering firms are on-call engineers, so I'm sure they would freshen the proposal up if time lapses, but there's not an except-by date at this point.
Right, and I just, you know, this is a lot of money, and I want to be very certain that, you know, we're making the right decision here. And at this point, I do not feel comfortable moving forward until we do just a little bit more homework. I recommend that we postpone. However, there's anybody in the audience that would like to discuss?
My name's Leslie Fernandez, and I think I've been here now for a year, asking for the city's endorsement and cooperation with the building of pickleball courts, outdoor pickleball courts, not with mats, not indoors that we have to roll up. We have been going for two and a half years now with schlepping equipment on a daily basis, setting up nets for our members, taking them down after the two hours, two and a half hours of play, and we have proposed numerous things, as this commission is aware. We've been told six months ago that we were going to be very, very happy with the money that had been budgeted for outdoor pickleball courts. We have yet to be very, very happy. We actually thought that this proposal was going to be the first step in a process that could probably take place in the spring and summer of twenty twenty-four. We all recommend, there's nine of us here on two days' notice, to support the passage or the, the action by the commission tonight to, to accept this proposal. We all understand the expense, and we understand the expense of the project, but this, this isn't even looking at what the project is going to be, although she talks about it being aid courts. You're not there yet. This, this is going to have to be done, no matter what. This engineering proposal has got to be done if you are going to support outdoor pickleball courts. My request tonight is, do it, or, or it's, it's a done, it's done. I, I don't know what else you have to look into at this point. She is incredibly detailed with what she provides and what she'll do, and if you're going to support pickleball courts, this has got to be done. You all are the ones who said, let's use our in-house engineer. You all are the ones who sought her out to do this, and so now you're backstepping again, and I hope you're not. I hope that you override Dr. Mestes's recommendation and that you say, yeah, let's do it. You know, we, we know that the five hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted for recreation has now been at least partially freed up because of the DFA grant. Use it for outdoor recreation, and that's what we've asked for, for the last year, and that's what we're asking for tonight. I don't know if any other member is, or person in support of pickleball wants to speak, but I can't tell you how much that we have endured waiting for this moment to get this going and get it started, and we ask you to do that.
Anyone else wish to address?
This is just a little general information, Dr. Mestes, and for everyone, we too were a little bit about the price of it. So I reached out to the Parks and Recreation Director in Pueblo, because he oversaw their courts being built. They did theirs in-house with their in-house engineer. Anyway, I did ask him about the price, and I, and I sent him over the proposal. He looked it over, and he replied, I did not make copies to hand to y'all, but the question I had was whether the scope of work was overkill, was price overkill. Anyway, his answer was, depending on what was included in the scope, he, he said this was the proposal in line with what their engineer had for their aid courts. So the price isn't really out of line. I mean, it sounds extremely high, but with the aid courts in Pueblo being almost the same engineered, and I didn't reach out to anyone else. I knew Steve, so I reached out to them. So just for your information, the price is in line.
Okay, thank you for that information. Who was the engineer?
Their in-house engineer. He did not mention who their in-house engineer is, but the person I reached out to is a park and recs director.
Would you mind terribly just passing that around? We'll give it back to you, that letter.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
I, I do have one question, Mayor, and when you guys originally were talking, have we always talked about eight courts, or wasn't it six at one point? Oh, it's always been eight?
We've, we've always presented eight, Commissioner Schuster. In my discussions on the side with Commissioner Chatterley, she has tried to pull me back on that. We, we proposed eight primarily, I think there's two ways to look at it, a quality of life, outdoor recreation project, and an economic development driver. We had proposed it almost 60/40 as the economic driver, because in our trips to probably 20 places now in the last year and a half for tournaments, we see that it takes eight courts to put on a, to put on a three-day tournament that will bring in people from, from afar. There are some in our group that would say to you, just do four, heck with it, just do four, let's get it, get four and get the quality of life side of it done. JP, who just spoke, had an idea, or has had the idea, of saying, pour the pad for eight, finish four, and hope that someday we can do eight. But I, I think we know from the Aquatic Center what happens with that, you know? So, so we have been pushing eight. I don't, I don't think that we would be happy with anything less than six, but, you know, again, that comes down, I think, down the line after this proposal is, after Engineering Analytics does the proposal and says, goes out to bid for how much the, the eight courts are, six courts are, four courts are.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, I, for some reason, I had in my head you were originally asking for six.
No, we, when it was the El Portel proposal, we had six, and we, we stuck with that. When we, when Commissioner Chatterley and I looked at one of the other locations that the city had in mind, we, we were trying to envision whether six or eight would fit there, and, and, you know, those discussions have been had, but, but our, our position is pretty firmly at eight, but, you know, it may, may come down with the, the money issue.
I don't know that six courts would change the cost of this.
It's not gonna change the cost of it.
Not the cost of the, the proposal, no.
It changed the construction.
Construction cost, right.
May I comment, Ms. M?
Yes.
So I have met with pickleball groups and trying to find a location to kind of, because we did have plans for the El Portel lot and to find something in the happy medium, but I do wanna point out that, to me, this project is not about making a pickleball group happy. This is about spending money wisely for the entire city of Rattone. And I have had people who also play pickleball and come saying this is a complete waste of money, that they don't like this. However, I've never been for more than four courts, irregardless of the tournament argument, the supposed economic development end of things, 'cause to me, economic development is job creation. So it's, I look at it very differently. But I think this is a huge amount of money, and it said on that email, 15% to 20% of construction cost would be fair. So if this is, if this is that, then we're closer to the construction costs that I had mentioned earlier, the, which was the one I've gotten from Trinidad, that's closer to a 600,000-plus mark of the total project, which to me is a heck of a lot of city money. So we know that it can't all be city money, and I wouldn't be even comfortable with the potential of the 400 that would come, be freed up by the grant. I've never been comfortable with that, I've always been comfortable with around 250. And I have stated that. We might all have a different level of being comfortable with the money, but it is really important to me as we make this decision that it be good for everyone in Rattone. And one reason I did like the Aquatic Center location is because we talked about how that could be a location that would be, you could have equipment rental out at the Aquatic Center, there's bathrooms already on the facilities, there's people at the Aquatic Center tending to manage things, and so that's one reason why I really like that, and that property does have the potential for expansion if there were ever grant money. I know this group's worked really hard to try to find grant money for pickleball. I have looked around, too. It is, as far as we can tell, it is not out there. But it is a heck of a lot of city money to spend on something when we, we try so hard to find grant money so that we're not spending that, 'cause it is, at the end of the day, general fund money, which is not easy to replace or have, and has to be very carefully and wisely spent. You know, when we're looking at an ambulance or, or things like that, that's usually the things that come out at that price point for general fund. I still think four courts is enough, I still, I, I would be happy with less, but I know that was my compromise number, and I, I don't wanna go back on saying that, but I still am more comfortable with that 250 mark, and if we, and what, we're gonna have to have preliminary engineering if we put it outdoor at the Aquatic Center, and this is the price point, you know, then we're, then to me that, you know, then that leaves us 140 left in my mental budget for construction. Maybe you push it to 300, that's not gonna get anything, and so where is other money coming from? I know you guys have talked, potentially did the county about, you know, Psy had said in a meeting, not committing anything, but you know, that maybe there might be something somewhere in the county. How are we gonna get money to actually build something is my, is my question, before we agree to the engineering amount? What is our funding source? Or do we get the engineering going and then figure out the funding? That's pretty much my comments.
Here's my, my comments. This report's gonna have to be done, this, this is gonna have to be done, whether we build four, whether we build six, whether we build eight. This is gonna have to be done. Mr. Mestes has brought up the possibility of indoor and all that and met, and mats. I, I don't even know what the mats look like, but in my mind, Mr. Mestes, that didn't, that wouldn't work for me if I was, if I was gonna participate. The other point is, we got 400,000 hopefully freed up, 117,500 is gonna be eaten up just with this. Leaves you with 383, 382,500. That's not gonna build four, four courts. We need to see if we can come up with a partner in this, i.e., let's work the county and other people, but regardless, if we're gonna construct outside and, and right now, if we're gonna construct, if the, it looks like it's the Aquatic Center, I, I would bite the bullet on this and then see while the bids come in for construction, and see how much is exactly what we've got to, to work with.
I, I absolutely agree that we need partnership on that. There's no way we can fund that in this entire project.
The proposal that we had for eight courts, Mr. Mayor, was 360,000, complete.
Yeah, I understand that, Jay.
So 382 would do it.
I understand what your quote would, but we have to go for, we have to follow our procedures.
I understand.
And we're not probably gonna get eight courts for, for 382.
Why wouldn't you guys get them if we could get one?
Will, will this person respond to our bid?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it's, it's an open bid, so if he wants to, and yeah, if he thinks he can do it.
It's a company that built Springs Courts.
But are they located in Pueblo?
They're in Denver, out of Denver.
Okay.
And then they do, that's what they do.
Well, it would be an open bid, you know, go out for RFP.
We typically don't go out for RFP until we have a funding source.
Funding. Right.
That's what slows the city down.
Right.
That process.
Well, I'm, personally, I'm, I'm not for postponing this. I would propose that we went ahead, we've done this, how long now? Like you've said, a year that we've said, let's do this. I would not be for an indoor court, you know? If you're gonna do that, maybe somewhere down the line, you could have them for the winter months or something, whenever the weather's bad, but I think we ought to start with this and then do just like we said, and, and watch the money, where it's gonna come from.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure, it's open.
Neither pro nor con, but in this discussion of what we do, the first thing is, I, I do not find Engineering Analytics' proposal to be excessively expensive, but the information garnered from doing those types of investigations is going to be very site-specific, like exactly where you drill, the geotechnical is only relevant to there.
Right.
You can reduce those costs by getting into the less happy space of utilizing other facilities, existing courts, they reduce construction costs significantly. In the absence of that, I would say you should never design a house you don't plan on building. So if we're voting yes to this, and we know that the net outcome of, of that could be 800,000 dollars, that would, would give me some pause. The four courts versus eight courts, how you bid it, I mean, there's, there's ways of doing that to get some cost certainty, but to go through a 100,000 dollar process to find out what that price point is, may not be our, our best. It may be the fastest avenue. There are companies through CES, I reached out to one today, which through Cooperative Education Services, they have contractors that do turnkey operations, build tracks, stadiums, things like that, and before we commit to this funding, it would maybe be worthwhile to see what they, through a, a legal procured source, would propose for a four-court or eight-court setup. We would have no obligation to move forward, but it would establish pricing that maybe would, you know, at least tell us, four courts is worth, 600,000 on native ground versus, you know, eight courts is worth 1.2, because I feel like somewhere, you know, the, the costs that we are seeing and people that make estimates for a living are dying on the vine 20% under every day right now. And I, I just fear that if, if we get 117,000 dollar set of plans only to find out that we don't wanna build a 750,000 dollar pickleball court, money that could have been used to build that court has already been spent. And at that point, you have a geotechnical investigation here, and all option of, of using that cost savings at another existing court are out of the way there. I mean, I agree that, you know, indoor is probably not, you know, the, the way you'd go, it should be a seasonal sport, but I just caution that, I'd hate to have a set of plans and specs, because I, I can't identify a definite funding source that, you know, capital outlay, I, I think when you put it up against hard infrastructure projects, Senator Campos and, and Chatfield, neither one are gonna carry that for us. So unless we knew we had the partnership upfront, I mean, having those discussions with the county in the weeks to come before going forward with an engineering proposal seems to be more in line of, of how this flow process will work, but just, you are clearly the decision makers, but, you know, I feel like, you know, if, if staff has, has input into that process, that if, if we were building this from the ground up in-house, that's how we would go about it. The geotechnical investigation is what most people would require, there are very few that are gonna build that without one, and, and they're expensive, but like I say, if we get to that point, even if we approve this proposal tonight, before we direct that drilling rig, we need to know exactly where these courts are gonna go, because especially at Roundhouse, you have a lot of railroad waste and a variety of native soil that can change over 50 feet to a large degree, so, I mean, I think we should move forward with some caution if we're moving forward.
Thank you.
I have a question for the pickleball. If you had four courts to begin with and left it open that we could add them, is that, would that be good enough for, for all the pickleball players, if we started with four? Because if you can remember, we started with two tennis courts back in the 60s, but I just wonder if you guys feel that it would, that it would work that way?
Didn't ask, didn't ask.
Huh?
I live on Sugar Ridge, you guys, commissioners before put some out there back in the 80s. I was, I was a witness to that. Branduk, tennis racket courts, she knows about it.
Yeah, Romero Park, yeah.
Yes, and didn't ask that one, they tore it down, the foundation's still there. Quite a waste of money, tennis rackets, pickleball. So you gotta think, where's that money going? Right, they were torn down.
Well, they were there for quite a while, weren't they?
No, I lived there 20 years. Probably my six years may have been maxed.
And on the 1990s, we took our kids there and played tennis.
I didn't see nobody there, really, pretty good.
Well, that's noted.
Well, that's noted, you know, it's a waste of money, to me, I think it's a waste of money. They have something better to do.
Well, can somebody from the pickleball, Leslie, can you say that if it was four or six, and we can't do eight right now, would that, would that appease the pickleball? I've seen the one in Pueblo, I've seen the, and they're pretty impressive, you know, and the people that show up.
There's a lot of folks.
There's a lot of economic development money.
Commissioner Chavez, you know, if, if you were to say nothing or four, of course, we're gonna say four. I think Commissioner Chatterley is, is focused on what Trinidad is, is doing for saying four. We, we would like.
They actually have six.
We would like more, we would like more, you know, we would like six, we would like eight. And I think that's all going to be bid-driven as to what the, you know, for, for JP to have three or four bids that were all under 400,000 dollars last spring, could be more, but to say 750,000 or 1.2 million, I don't know where that's coming from. And I, I apologize, Jason, but, you know, that's not what we see when we travel to places and ask the, and they're, and they're all municipal courts, mind you, these are, these are communities in Colorado and New Mexico that have built courts, their municipalities have stepped up and done it. Those, those amounts are not 750,000 or 1.2 million, and they're, and they're new build, they're not reconstructed. So, you know, if you're gonna say four, and that's why I mentioned the, the, the idea of doing the pad for eight and finishing four, so that at least there's the possibility of using that pad by painting it ourselves, or taping it, or something like that, you know, there, there are some options that probably could be looked at where the, the expense is four plus.
One, one other question.
Pagosa Springs just finished there for 380.
380 in Pagosa Springs. I, you know, I understand that there might be a wide range of, of money, of bids, but we're not seeing 750,000, we're not seeing 500 or 600,000, we're seeing 350 to 400, for eight courts, for eight.
Let me ask you one more thing, too. You had a donor that was interested in when we were gonna put it at the El Portel, is that donor, whoever it may be, interested in doing anything else other than that?
Nope. He wanted to help the blight of the downtown at the El Portel. He has not shown, you know, we haven't asked him point-blank, Commissioner Chavez, but he has not shown any interest in pursuing it after the El Portel was off the, off the table.
Thank you.
I could add one thing. Have you heard?
Say your name.
Oh, sorry, Michael. Yeah, I moved here from Alaska, I've worked heavy construction my whole life, about 35 years. The courts that they're proposed are post-tension cable, okay? So the fill and everything is not gonna be near as critical as anything else, because it can be actually zero compaction underneath it, and it's not gonna phase it, that's why they do post-tension. Okay? The other thing is, as you've noticed, the prep, what I call prep, all the investigating, the soil testing, all that, that's always a major expense, you know, for any project. It, it always seems like a waste to me, but I mean, they have to have it somewhat. Okay, so building four courts or eight courts, regardless, you're gonna have to hire a contractor that's skilled in this process. you're going to have to hire a contractor that's skilled in this process. And the cost is going to be very negligible between four courts and eight courts. I mean, and especially if you're thinking of building four later. I mean, the cost would be true, you're not spending as much in the beginning, but the overall projects definitely would be more because nobody does that around here. You're going to have to import people, like you said, from Denver, Albuquerque, or wherever to to do the building. Okay? Um, regardless of the fact, like you say, you got to do the the soil testing and all that. So we're kind of stuck with that. But the actual cost, I mean, I I would be very shocked if it would be that much more four versus eight. And to, because it's it's post-tension, you have to have the equipment out here to do that. You know, it's a one-time deal. I mean, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So why, why spend the extra money to do it twice? You know, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, it, I don't know. Do you have any questions on on the post-tension or anything? I mean, so that's one nice thing, too. If you have it proposed that it is post-tensioning, the cost of the soil testing and all that is not near as critical as far as the report, okay? Because it's post-tensioning, built a lot of parking garages and stuff like that. You don't have to have anything underneath it and it never cracks, you know? That's just, it's a little bit more expensive way to build, but it then it's definitely nice. If you just pour slab on gray down out on the dirt in a few years, well, it's not near as bad as it is in Alaska, but here we still have the freeze thaw cycles and it's going to crack. Okay, post-tensioning really minimizes the cracks. Look, um, every slab that I've ever poured post-tension, really, there is no no cracks whatsoever. And, you know, I don't know if you guys, if you guys have played tennis or or pickleball, but a crack in the court, it is not very good. Yeah, so, I don't know.
Well, we do have experience with post-tension. We got a visitor says post-tension slab, it's full of cracks.
Now, that definitely should not be. I mean, I I poured a lot of them over about thirty-five years and it's, uh, it's the best way to go. Almost every bridge is designed that way, everything, you know, so.
I understand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one thing, when you talk to your designer, you're going to have to have more.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Tony with Raton Homes, but I've been a builder in construction for fifty years. And your your size of the courts are twenty by forty-four feet. But they recommend that you build something that's thirty by sixty for the area around the actual court itself. So you're going to come back with a number from a designer that if somebody's penciling out how much those eight courts, you know, consist of, it's going to be bigger than what you think it will be because they're going to add in all this extra space around there. So you can't walk on mud to get onto the court. They're going to want a paved area around the court. So just as a heads up, that number will become bigger when you get to the construction phase.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, I'm not thinking of Trinidad. Um, I took the email that JP gave us with the fifteen to twenty percent and I did the math based on this thing we got right here, which is exactly what was said in that email. So I, that's where I got the five hundred to six hundred thousand, uh, dollars from that. So, um, yeah, I think we've argued this till we're blue in the face. We either pass it or we don't and.
This, uh, just so you know, uh, Lauren.
Or go through the process that Jason, um, recommended as somebody who's does this all the time.
This right here, this was the original email I sent him. I didn't print out this, the one where he looked over the the, there's a follow-up on this where he says that the, uh, dollar amount is in line. This was the original that I asked him if, what kind of ideas he had on price and he came with the fifteen and twenty percent. But once I sent him the proposal that we had in hand, then he looked it over and said it's in line with what they had.
This proposal proposal's in line?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not arguing that.
Yeah.
I was just saying that.
Fifteen to twenty percent was what he originally just shot out there.
And that's a ballpark of this is fifteen per twenty percent of the overall construction cost is what he says there. And so that's where I was getting that five to six hundred.
Nine.
Thank you.
Could I just add one quick comment?
One quick.
I'll be very quick. Um, I just need to make it clear that this is not a membership. This is not a club, this is not a private entity. This this club welcomes anyone that wants to come and play pickleball. Um, and if we had a really nice facility where people could come and play more, we would be there to help. So, you know, I wanted to spell this rumor that we're private and we're, there's only a few of us that play and, because that's not true. Anyone that has ever shown up when we're playing has been welcomed and has been given paddles and been given an idea about the game. Um, and if we had a nice facility, we could integrate more programs as far as children and senior citizens and everyday people that want to play. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, just one final comment from the bench over here. Um, this is exactly why I feel like we need to delay. Is that we have varying opinions from different people and I want to make data-driven decisions. I want us to make sure that we know exactly where this is headed. I mean, if it's headed to four pickleball courts, if it's headed to buying the Kmart building and building a pickleball palace, you know, we want to make data-driven decisions. And I do not feel like we have that data ready to go. You know, if we're to be given a month, I think I can come up with this decision, but, um, I'm just not comfortable and I think you've witnessed that tonight. That's all.
Thank you. What's the wish of the commission? Well, the pickleball, talking to the pickleball bunch again. Uh, do you have a problem with, say, another month of us waiting to make sure that we get this all right? Uh, so that the money is spent right, the money comes from where it's supposed to, and we end up with six or eight pickleball courts? So.
What are you going to do in a month that would change what you would do tonight?
I would have more time to research this.
Research what?
Research the costs, research the location, research what the end state will be. As you've seen tonight, you know, there are varying, uh, ideas about what we can afford, what we can have. And it is my responsibility that we spend our money wisely and we do the greatest good for the greatest amount of people. That is my job and that is, uh, I mean, it's, of course, it's the commission's decision, but, um, you know, and I will follow what they instruct me to do. But I want to make data-driven decisions and I've just not seen a lot of data on this.
Mayor, may I ask one question of Mr. Phillips?
Sure.
Um, Jason, when you were talking about the companies that you could ask and talk to to get like a ballpark in our area of what it would cost in Raton roughly, are you talking about just at the Aquatic Center or are you talking about asking them for for like different existing structures and what it would cost? Or what would what would that data provide, do you think, that would help the decision?
Commissioner Charlie, the company that we came across, Jayden was actually doing research on CES for the Coors Building. And this company that I reached out to, which I I got the email from Jayden earlier today. It's not like in advance of this meeting, we jumped on this. Uh, my email to them was simply that we were, um, looking into building pickleball courts on native soil at the Raton Aquatic Center and wanted to see if they would be interested in providing pricing for budgetary reasons. Um, CES generally, you know, is is not the cheapest way to go, but the fact that it's a specialty company that does this, I think that that would give us an idea. I don't anticipate pickleball courts costing one point two million dollars. But just for example, I mean, we we priced a bay door at my shop within the last four weeks. I had a bid at five thousand, a bid at ten thousand, and a bid at twelve thousand. And until you have some realistic idea of of what it's going to cost, you know, you you don't, you know, the even the best of us that estimate on a project that was completed months ago, your your pricing is is not valid in the way it was for many years in this thing. And when we get pricing in Raton, it's based on people having to pay per diem, work, if they work five-hour weeks, they pay overtime. The state weight scales and things that we have to use as a government that procures it, it's it's vastly different than than what happened in Colorado. Now, if a municipality in New Mexico built a pickleball court, I mean, a larger one probably designed it in-house where, you know, we would have maybe had that luxury once upon a time if Mr. Barry was more of a pickleball engineer than than a street and bridge engineer. But, um, the the cost is plus. It's a hundred and seventeen thousand for engineering services plus whatever that is, whether we're talking three fifty or five hundred, it takes the project to six hundred and fifteen thousand. It, by bringing in a CES contractor with the same requirements for warranty periods and stuff, I mean, we'd we'd know they'd say four hundred thousand dollars, doesn't necessarily matter, I mean, we'd hire them, but it would give us, I I just don't feel comfortable designing an eight-court pickleball if you, because there, I mean, I I don't look to argue with anybody, but we we deal in estimated quantities in curb and gutter, sidewalk, drive pad, twice the amount of concrete, may not cost exactly twice the amount of money, but it's going to be pretty close. The economy of scale of concrete flatwork and such isn't that if you add twice the amount, you get that much better deal. The price will be the price, then it's the fluff. Are you, how nice a fencing do you want? If you want basic chain link that's around the transfer station, it's X dollars a linear foot. If you want what's typically what I see in most of the pickleball courts, it's a more decorative, higher dollar, which I I'm not proposing build a prison yard with a concrete slab in it. It's just that those pricing right now are, those are unknown variables that that, you know, I I don't think you want to not find out till bid day. Now, you could fillet a bid in ways that if this, then that, remove item A. But to balance, the the challenge of an unbalanced bid, they know you're not going to get rid of the pickleball court. So they, the contractor will place most of their money that they want to recoup in that and you won't see the savings in the other item. And it could be such that, you know, if the available funding only built courts and we had to chase ways of funding fencing, I mean, none of them are ideal other than writing a great big check for everything that everybody wants. And I I'm all for pickleball baller, everything else we do. But I mean, part of what I get paid to do is to help input into these decision-making processes without having any bias towards it. I mean, i- if we could afford it, that's great, but my second hat says, I could pave six and a half miles of city streets for eight hundred thousand dollars and that might not be so bad either. So, you know, where we weigh this thing at, you know, there's never enough resources in this building to do what we all want, but that that much we know is true. But the CES pricing would, and.
Give us a ballpark.
And it would be a price that that actually, if you liked it and wanted to jump on it, they'd have to hold to it. You know, I don't know how the lead time would work on on when they begin, but if the pricing came and they gave that quote, I mean, it is cost certainty at that point.
Is it, is it a possibility to make an approval contingent upon, uh, reasonable within our four hundred thousand budget estimate and potential partnerships or do?
Right now, all that we've got up for consideration is engineering.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And I and I hear what everybody said and and I know Commissioner Chavez has stated he was against delaying, but we've kind of kind of flipped here. If we could get a co- cost estimate from CES in the next few days and put that on our next meeting.
The special meeting, I'd say.
I don't know if we'll have it by the special meeting because this.
I I doubt that would be, I would assume that any qualified party would probably want to come here, see the site at least. And and their pricing may include the items that are in that proposal. They may have in-house engineering.
Right.
I mean, I don't know that this necessarily requires a New Mexico stamp. I would think with post-tension slab, it generally should, anything with a piece of metal in New Mexico generally does. But, um, but the timeframe on that, I mean, how quick that proposal comes, I mean, the month of December going into Christmas may may not be thirty days.
That's why I say if we could, if we could get this contractor with CES a proposal so that we know what we're looking at in thirty days if if for one of our meetings in January, then at that time, we look at that and say, oh, well, that might work. Oh, well, that might not work, then we know we can move with this.
Can I ask just a clarifying question? You're saying that that could actually include some of this? So we would, we would be doing double duty if we did this and that?
It would be, it would be a separate road to travel. I mean, and this is our traditional construction method. We hire our engineer, we go out to sell bid, we pay the design fees, all of that upfront. And on bid day, hopefully, we get a bid, which, I mean, we've opened a couple lately that we had zero bids for not pickleball courts. Um, this CES process kind of circumvents some of the design elements of that. It's it's a one-stop shop. Ultimately, I'm old school and I still believe in hiring engineers to design projects overseas and structure. You kind of get what you pay for. I think that profession, you know, that's where my background is. I I think that's the the cleaner way. But CES is designed for small cities and schools to circumvent some of those processes and, you know, it's a way, but.
And it would give us the ballpark for our specific areas.
I I think it would, I think it would give us firm fixed pricing. Yes, no, we we would not obligate anything. But I mean, and they're generally, these are expensive ass projects where you put, you know, you'll send a guy, you'll do it. I would ask for a price for four and four eight, or maybe four, six and eight. But the, um, ultimately, the difference is engineers are looking at what they think it's going to cost. A contractor is going to look at what's it going to cost him and what his profit markup, bonding and capacity are on it. And he's going to be a lot, um, more involved in in making that estimate when he has to live with the result than, you know, an engineer. Half the time when you open the engineer's estimate, they tell you to build it for it because it's underneath what it should be.
Mr. Duran?
Mayor, to go, this other company that you're talking about, why would we want to get a estimate from them other than to find out whether they're doing the engineering or not?
No, we're trying to find out an estimate for the entire project.
Yeah, not easily from.
Not just the engineering, for the entire project.
That's what I mean. They're, you're strictly asking them for their proposal, does it include the engineering?
That's what we're going to find out, yes.
It would be, it would be a price for a turnkey project.
Well, that would just be a simple question, does your price include engineering?
No, it's exactly how much would you charge to build four, six, or eight pickleball courts?
But we already have proposals for eight.
No, we don't.
No, you have those.
No, we have no.
We have no proposals.
I mean, we have one proposal.
The proposals you guys got.
Is this going to be an RFP proposal?
No, no.
CES is a state contracting thing that we can go straight to.
You just ask straight them and they can give us a price.
It eliminates the RFP. If they meet the qualifications of the project and that, we can hire them just out of the book.
Without.
Without RFP, without anything.
Right.
And if, as Jay said, if this guy came in with the eight courts for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we sign a contract and he's got to stick to that price.
Okay, that was my question because our bid proposal, there there weren't any questions on it. There, it is vinyl fencing, it's not chain link. The only thing that we didn't specify on there was the color.
Well, I, I mean, I I don't want to go back and forth, I'm not trying to be, but, but, I mean, for us to do business, there's state weight rates.
That's right.
All of that is factored in the CES, there's. All of that is factored in the CES, there's funding and insurance requirements. There's just the government way that we're required by law to do it.
Yep.
CES is just that process has been done on a statewide level for cooperative educational services.
That's why I asked the question again last day, that if, if we could have another, we postponed it for tonight, and we find out all these questions that have been asked, so that we get the best deal for the, for the most. That's why, that's why I thought that we could, after I said this, not postpone it. I think it should be postponed for a little bit.
If, if it works for CES to pick it up, that would, would, I think, be the most expedient way to get the job completed, wouldn't it, put it on?
It is.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, I've found it to be the more expensive way. It's hit or miss.
We'll just, let's, let's see what they come up, come back with. If that's the wish of the commission.
Is there a cost to, to the CES?
Uh, we will pay an additional markup of one per side of the unit.
I'm, I'm just curious why CES wasn't the initial proposal a couple of months ago when you all decided to.
Well, we just started, we started thinking, when we started getting numbers in, like hearing of a million last week, we started looking at other things.
No, no, no. I mean, why, why was that not a proposal when we met here, Jason, instead of the engineering analytics? I guess that's, that's what the question is, if this is the more expedient and cheaper way.
Because CES is an educational cooperative system, and I never envisioned that pickleball was going to be something under their roof.
Yeah, you just found out yesterday.
They, you get, oh, yeah, Jaden found it.
Jaden found it yesterday.
You, they, they do football fields, baseball fields, you know, things that are generally associated with the school, but it, it never crossed my mind that they would be involved in pickleball.
I just wanted to point out that you're going to look at a surface that's fourteen thousand, four hundred square feet. That's how big you're projecting eight courts to be. Fourteen thousand. That's what the math is. Okay, well, just so everybody knows that you're looking at fourteen thousand square feet, a surface, hard surface, that you're going to have to pay.
May I? I just want to say that, to be clear, we're trying to get the best pickleball courts and best outdoor recreation centers and activities available for the, for the best quali-, you know, the best quality for the best price, because we're spending not just y'all's money, but everybody in the community's money. And we need to, we do need to be good stewards of that money. But we're, we're not at all against pickleball courts, not one iota. We, we really are hoping we can get this project done and get it done as inexpensively, but yet quality, you know, quality-driven. And, and so that's why, you know, we're not, we're not trying to deny you guys pickleball courts. And nor do we think that you are an exclusive club. We're making this for the entire community, and we hope that you're, and we're very glad that we have a pickleball club who is, you know, worth, or looking toward promoting it as a viable activity in the community. It's, it's good for very many reasons, so. But given the information that Mr. Phillips has presented tonight, I think it, personally, I think it's worthwhile to get that information, wait on this decision, and proceed in the, in the more cautious direction.
Okay, I'm ready and can I motion?
Uh, which, leading in January, the twenty-third, is that a fair date, you think, or until it's available?
As soon as I make contact, I will let you know. I, I mean, because they could opt to say, no, we only like to work in this region of the state. I mean, they may not have any interest in our project. It's just a last twenty-four hour development, to even know they exist. I mean, if, if I could give them a target towards the first meeting in January, if they could have a proposal, it, it's just a matter of whether they can meet it or not. But I can look in as, as soon as I hear back.
How about if we say, hopefully by then, but no later than the second meeting of January?
One of you got to make the motion, I don't.
Well, I move that we postpone, um, acting on the, the engineer analytics, analytics proposal until the second meeting in January.
Until.
Unless it's available sooner?
Yeah, unless it's available sooner.
Other information isn't, but this is what we're, we're delaying is, is acting on that.
Right.
Yeah.
On this, so.
Oh, we can, we can delay this. If Jason gets the information, we can put that on the first agenda, the first meeting.
Okay.
Exactly.
So we're just delaying this to the second, or twenty-third. But if Jason gets the information, we'll have it on the first.
Yep. So that's the motion and the second, I believe.
Motion and second.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear you, sorry, Larry. Okay, we have motion and second to delay the analytics until July, or Ja- July, January twenty-third.
I believe that's the correct date. Twenty twenty-four.
What if it is second meeting?
Second meeting in January.
I'd have to look.
I think it is the twenty-third. All in favor, roll by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Moving on. Item I, deliberate and act on agreement between the City of Raton and V. Hillen Associates Architectural Group PC for renovation of the historic Colonel Kearney School Facility. Mr. Mestes.
Um, Commissioner, Mayor, Commission, um, I would like to call forward our Director of Public Works, Jason Phillips.
Mayor and Commission, I will be presenting this this evening as a, Mr. Jaden Welch did a bunch of the legwork on this project, but he's under the weather. So not looking to steal any of Jaden's thunder, but just to kind of give a voice to the proposal. As you remember, our last meeting, we awarded V. Hillen Associates the RFP for Design Services for Kearney School with the indication that we would return as quickly as possible with a fee proposal, as well as an AIA document that would be executed. So they have submitted their proposal. Jaden and I have visited with them over Zoom numerous times, and they came and did a sidewalk at Kearney, met with the folks from out Raton Media Works to kind of get a feel of the entirety of the scope of work. And what you see is a fee proposal that falls in line with what our estimate was. They're, they've got a total fee proposal of three forty-seven, four seventy-eight, oh eight, with a HUD NIPA consultant adder if required for twelve thousand. So essentially, our initial conversations with HUD indicated that this project more than likely would be a programmatic, programmatic categorical exclusion environmental process. But until you get farther along, you're not able to get that certainty. In the event that it requires the next level up, which would be a basic environmental assessment, that twelve thousand dollar adder will kick in. So we'd have a total that we are approving right now of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four seventy-eight, oh eight. And then we would not be billed the adder if we are not forced to go that level of NIPA consultant. Seems to be a very qualified firm. The fee proposal seems to be very much in line of what today's architectural and engineering costs are. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
Any questions?
Motion to adopt the agreement between the City of Raton and V. Hillen Associates Architectural Group PC for renovation of the Kearney School Facility for the aforementioned price.
I'll second it. Motion and second to adopt the agreement between the City of Raton and V. Hillen Associates. Is there any further discussion? Des, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item J, deliberate and act on Alpha Design's scope of work change for the Raton Senior Center, remaining kitchen improvements. Mr. Mestes.
Uh, yes, this is a change of work order for oven mats, stainless steel countertops, and, I'm sorry, oven mats, oven comma mats, stainless steel, stainless steel countertops. I'd like to call the City Treasurer forward.
Uh, Mayor and Commission, we had reported earlier in the year that we did do a bid for the kitchen renovations. Uh, this project received grant funding from Aging and Long-Term Services in the amount of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, one percent of that, one thousand six hundred and fifty, would be committed towards art, which is a requirement for this capital outlay funding. Since the completion of the work that was bid, we have roughly twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars left to spend by June thirty. So we did reach out to our architect, who is Alpha Design, Dave Little. Um, he's been working with Jaden Welch, our Director of Engineering. And so they did go back down to the senior center and kind of reevaluate some of the needs of the kitchen. I did reach out to Aging and Long Term. We've been holding on to Mr. Little's proposal until we could get confirmation from them that we would even be allowed to request a change in the scope. So, um, last week, I, on Friday, I did receive their response. Um, and we have been approved to request that scope of work change. Um, as you will see in Mr. Little's proposal, uh, we do have some issues with the existing double oven that we would need to address. You know, it's very important. I mean, Neil would probably be able to tell us how many meals a day they serve, but you can't run a senior.
Yeah, they run about a hundred and seventy-five meals a day.
Yeah, so you can't adequately run a kitchen without a reliable oven. So that would definitely be a priority. Um, in addition, uh, we did look at potentially replacing the floor and some other things, but that was going to exceed the amount of funding that we had available. Um, so we do believe, um, that we could replace the countertops with stainless steel. So, um, that would be the, the proposal as detailed in Alpha Design's document that's in your packet. Uh, the price that he is proposing is thirty-five hundred dollars plus GRT.
That's Mr.? That's Mr. Little's fees? Yeah.
Yeah, this would be Mr. Little's fees. Um, and then we would work with him, uh, probably to do another bid for the remainder of the work.
Any questions?
Did, did the architect fees come out of the grant funding, or is that separate?
No, it comes out of the grant.
Yes, so his fees currently do come out of the grant. Uh, we do, upon approval this evening, I would, um, draft the request for the scope change. I'll get that approved first, and then I would submit his approved proposal for a notice of obligation, um, in order to be able to utilize the grant funds for his services.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And your can of motion?
I want to approve. Alpha Design's scope of work change for the Raton Senior Center remaining kitchen improvements.
Second?
A motion and second to approve the Alpha Design's scope of work change. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on change, Commission Chambers Upgrade, utilizing AVI-SPL LLC CES twenty twenty-three dash twenty C one one one. All, Mr. Mestes.
Again, I would like to call our Director of Public Works forward.
Mayor and Commission, in front of you, you have a proposal from AVI SPL for what we are calling Commission Chamber Upgrades. Essentially, um, what we are looking at is not only upgrading the ability to, um, conduct these meetings in this room, but as well as staff uses this for training, Zooms, audit interviews, such. Um, so it's essentially two eighty-five inch TVs plus, and TV is more of a commercial television, not just what's on your wall. And the associated sound arrays and stuff to make that happen. It will be everything short of what they call a streaming box that would allow us to broadcast directly from this space. Uh, we would still use a laptop for that. Jaden and I met with several firms. We actually went and saw an installation in Taos that AVI SPL had completed. Excuse me. And, um, they do this work similarly across the UNM campuses in the state, the City of Las Vegas Chambers. And, uh, their system seemed to be the most user-friendly, functional, generally designed where the city clerk at the beginning of a meeting hits a single button and preset, and the entire room comes to life. It's, uh, safety art and what, um, the modern Zoom landscape essentially looks like. It, instead of a robot camera, it would have two fixed cameras that, that do the audience, an array of microphones, the ability to mix it, mute it, and pretty much everything that you would see everywhere else you've been. And I think when Jaden and I met with you all, uh, and discussed what the framework of that should look like, I believe this proposal satisfies most of those requirements that we were asked to task with.
Yeah, I believe this is the firm that did Socoro too, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I believe that is correct.
I've been to that meeting room a couple of times. It's impressive as hell.
They provide training, technical support to go along with it. Um, and in the preset function, you would have function one, City Commission Meeting, it'd behave in a certain way. When you turn it into a virtual classroom and you hit a separate preset, you're not reinventing the wheel. It, it's supposed to be designed where somebody with very little technical skill can facilitate a meeting in this space at any time.
What I liked about the one I was at in the meeting, on the Zoom, you know, of course, it depends on your connection, but the clarity of the sound of the people on the Zoom was incredible. It wasn't like they were talking through a muffler. It, it was pretty impressive. You could understand, they could actively participate in the meeting.
And, and Jaden and I visited with at least four different representatives. A, a lot of them more salesmen. Uh, these gentlemen came down there, the one was from Penasco, looked at the space, even though we had already sent pictures and everything. And when he got here, saw the kind of layout of the room, recognizes why you all have issues with the space. And I think ultimately, you end up with a display here and on that wall. Uh, we talked about the ability interface with KRTN system, where hopefully, you know, they can tie into the audio array with a, with a mixer over in here and, and not have to provide so much of their own equipment to broadcast for us. I got with Marty, kind of figured out what he needed. It was some tech talk that was above my head, but Marty and the guy seemed to be on the same page about what the output needed to be, and they said, no problem, we can provide both of it.
I really appreciate all the effort that you guys went to to research this because it brings me great peace of mind, because that was my biggest concern as we end up with something that no one knows how to use. And just that they've been here and you've been there. And this is, I mean, with trainings going the way they are, and a lot less in person, a lot more virtual, I think it's really essential that we get this room upgraded for the staff.
Yep, I think Jaden and I both felt hundred percent confident this is the way to go. And if it's not, it was all Jaden's fault.
Of course.
Any other questions, comments? And your can of motion?
I'll move to approve the Commission Chamber Upgrade utilizing AVI-SPL LLC CES twenty twenty-three twenty C one one one.
A motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item L, deliberate and act on Resolution twenty twenty-three seventy-two, authorizing the certification of the City of Raton's twenty twenty-three capital asset inventory.
Mayor and Commission, I would like to call forward our City Treasurer.
Uh, Mayor and Commission, we did request at the last meeting to postpone the report because we did not have it complete. But in your packet this evening, I do have the approving resolution. Uh, this is a requirement of the state audit rule. You'll see in the approving resolution, um, that Um, you'll see in the approving resolution, um, that, uh, some time ago, back in June of 2014, we did approve, uh, a fixed asset policy that we follow. Um, and then in 2013, uh, we had contracted with a company, um, to create the fixed asset database that we currently use. Um, since then, the company, Records Consultants, Inc., uh, returns annually, uh, generally in March, uh, which this past year, they were here the 21st through the 24th. Um, and they, the actual physical inventory of all barcoded assets, and, uh, they go to all locations within the city, the Water Works and, uh, Raton Public Service. Um, and they generally perform that work with, um, kind of a handheld scanner, um, and they go through that process, and it takes about a week. Um, and then any assets that we acquire after they've been here, between then and June 30, uh, we compile the lists and, uh, add those to the database. Um, a lot of them will be issued a temporary barcode, and then when they come again here in the spring, we provide them a list of everything that needs to be physically still barcoded. Um, a lot of times vehicles, we've acquired a lot of vehicles since they had been here. Um, the barcode doesn't physically go on the vehicle, it goes on the title in a book that we keep. Um, but you will see, um, I've attached several reports, uh, for you and also a memo. The reports consist of the summary of any additions and disposals that we did throughout the year. Um, this also includes any land, infrastructure, and building improvements that we also have to keep track of and add to the database. Um, this has become a little bit bigger of an undertaking the last couple of years because of the volume of projects that we've had. Um, but you'll see in our database, currently, we have 2,019 inventory items, and then there's 631 items that are classified as land improvements or buildings. There is a summary spreadsheet that I've prepared for you. And kind of the method that I go through when I prepare the report is I tie the beginning balance to last year's ending balance. Um, we run a depreciation report, a capitalization report, and, uh, the amounts of the assets that are, um, 5,000 and above, that's the capitalization threshold for things that we have to depreciate. So, um, those are the, the highlighted items that you'll see there on the summary. Um, so when we look at our depreciation report or our capitalization report, assets that are over 5,000, um, were just over 8.9 million, um, that, uh, appear on those depreciation reports. So, those reports, uh, are provided to the auditors. Um, that's a big part of the audit annually. Um, I also keep a, a binder that's department-specific of the assets for each department. So, we share those listings with the departments so that they share in the responsibility of maintaining, uh, the assets, uh, so that we're prepared when we do the inventory come spring. Um, the first, uh, report that I put in here was the asset acquisition for the real property. Every year, we do have a lot of projects that are considered construction and progress, and so if a project spends two fiscal years, we don't actually enter it into the database and start the depreciation until the project has been completed. So, in the meantime, we keep detailed spreadsheets for the auditors, um, so that they can see through June 30, um, how much we had expended and kind of what the remaining balance is uh, to complete that project. And then when the project is completed, then we kind of move it out of that construction and progress category and enter it into the database to begin the depreciation. So, um, you'll see that we've added, uh, 5,075,776, uh, was the value of all infrastructure and construction projects that were completed in FY '23. So, we did accomplish a lot of things in the past fiscal year. Like I said, a lot of them are street projects, uh, the hangar at the airport, uh, we had some exterior and roofing repairs, uh, done at the senior center, uh, the completion of the greenhouse project, the electrical upgrades, uh, at the old armory building. And then, uh, and then also, um, the very last item on that list is the land that was donated, uh, and that's now the, uh, property where the building was tore down, uh, next to the embanked building. So, um, anything that's classified as land doesn't get depreciated. But going back to that summary, we have the various item classes, and so you can kind of see, uh, the amounts that we have listed under land improvements, infrastructure, and building, which are separate categories. Um, in addition to that, you'll have your asset acquisition for personal property, um, so anything that was vehicles, computers. Um, the police department did replace, uh, some firearms this year, and then we also had some, uh, handheld radios as well, so you'll see those, uh, on the listing. Even though we only capitalize items over 5,000, we still tag items such as computers and TVs, VCRs, things like that, that could be, um, potential for, for theft. And I think that's, those are all of the reports that I put in your packets. Uh, did you have any questions over anything that we've provided?
Questions?
Well, it looks good to me.
Represents a lot of work.
Yep, takes a lot of time.
Thank you.
I'll move to, uh, adopt Resolution 2023-72, authorizing the certification of the Raton's 2023 capital asset inventory.
A second.
Motion and second to adopt Resolution 2023-72. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate and act on Resolution 2023-76, fiscal year '24, budget adjustment number five. Mr. Messis.
Again, uh, uh, Mayor, Commission, I call on, uh, our city treasurer.
Uh, Mayor and Commission, we do have, uh, in your packet this evening, our request for budget adjustment number five. Um, in anticipation of your approval this evening of the, uh, Commission Chamber Upgrades, uh, we would be seeking to utilize general fund reserves, uh, to fund that. I really only had a line item of $5,000 when we did the budget, uh, because we didn't really know what the costs were going to be until our city staff did the research or it went out to bid. So, um, we would be requesting a $50,000 increase to come out of reserves for that. Also, at a previous meeting, we were, um, awarded and approved a Trails Plus Grant, and then this evening, the Quality of Life Grant. Um, there is a matching component to both of those grants. Um, so of the 500,000 that you did budget for ballfield improvements, uh, we would be moving 101,000 out of that line item into a capital projects fund line item that we have just labeled as park capital improvements. So, we would be looking at a grant amount of 399,000, and then with the city match, the project would be a $500,000, uh, project. And then on the Trails Plus Grant, uh, we were awarded 65,748, but your match requirement on that would be 32,876. So, um, I did look to see if we had any funds available for the tunnel project, possibly out of lodgers tax, non-promotional, but, um, we pretty much have budgeted to spend all of those funds. The only way we could use it is if our lodgers tax comes in higher than we estimated, but that's kind of an unknown at this point. Um, so that would be my proposal, is to go ahead and take that out of general fund, uh, reserves to, um, cover the match for both of those projects. Stand for any questions?
Questions? Motion?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2023-76, budget adjustment number five. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, City Manager Report. Mr. Messis.
Mayor and Commission, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Managers Meeting in Albuquerque last week. I received some great training on, um, various things, including New Mexico's legislative priorities from the league, which are support for statewide emergency medical services, funding for water infrastructure projects through the Water Project Fund, expansion of workers' compensation coverage for first responders, investment in state and local infrastructure, coverage of public safety radio network fees for local public safety agencies, and elimination of improper tax administration fees on local governments. There is good information from the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund and broadband initiatives across the state. I will also be conducting supervisory training this week for all department heads. Mayor Protem Schuster and I visited Colfax Medical Center this afternoon as part of my orientation to the, uh, community. I will be out of the city, uh, between Friday and Sunday for a quick, uh, out-of-state trip. Uh, the big rocks within each department, uh, with the treasurer, the audit team is drawing down, but continues to work by distance. With the police department, the city has ordered the two telescoping cameras approved by the commission last week, or last meeting. Uh, with the fire department, the chief and the city engineer are reviewing improvements and removal of the trailers and potential construction at Station 04. That's the one over by, um, uh, the aquatic center. Public Works, they're, right as we speak, getting prepared for the potential major storm that's arriving tomorrow night. Uh, the city engineer is now focusing on new projects at the airport, including the power station and underground storage tanks. With facilities, the aquatic center is back up and running, uh, with, after repairs to the pumping system. The clerk is, uh, continuing to work on updated city's website. And with economic development, the city of Raton is in the final stages of interviewing and selecting a community and economic development director. We hope to have an announcement by early next week. And mentioned in dispatches, of course, Raton Public Works for their efforts in cleaning and coming, putting together for the upcoming storm. Closing thoughts, I attended the miners' day celebration recently with my better half, sister, brother. I'm the son of a coal miner and also the brother of a coal miner, um, long before he joined the Navy and served in Vietnam. I have a great picture that Frankie made of my family where I'm there. I'd like to say I'm the best-looking one there, but from, um, from Appalachia to California, the disappearance of mining has proved a death blow, death blow or near a death blow, but not here to Raton. While the spirit of mining might never die, uh, we need to decide in the coming months, where we're going to go from here, and we're going to have some community meetings on how we're going to look towards the future. What we become and how we look forward is really not tied so much to our past, because like me, of course, I'll always be the kid who grew up next to the railroad tracks in Trinidad, but that doesn't define who I am today. And the same thing goes for the city, is that we may be a mining town, but that's not going to define us today or in our future. And I predict our future is going to be very different, and I look forward to getting with the community on these meetings. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chatterley, anything?
Uh, I just wondered if you had a date for the staring in? Yep.
We haven't set a date yet, yes.
Mr. Jacomo? Mr. Chavez?
Once again, it's been my honor for all you guys.
Mayor Protem.
Well, just to mirror that, it's been an honor to work with you.
And I would echo that too, Ron, it's been great. Don't be a stranger. You can go step back with that other former guy left there. This meeting is adjourned, thank you. I didn't break it this time. It's not bad, it's not bad.